May 7th, 2019, meeting to order. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from April 2nd. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ford, second by Spence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pooled, carried. I'd just be added to the agenda by commission members or staff.
No, just my director's report.
Okay. One thing I would like to add, we need to address the premature resignation of Darryl Nelson due to medical issues. We just need to talk about that. Item number four, invitations for citizens to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed, time limited to five minutes per person to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to talk about something that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, will move on. Disclosure of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, will move on with agenda item number six, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as read?
Motion to approve.
Motion by McHugh, second by Kleinjohn. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need to, excuse me. The meeting tonight is being recorded and televised. Brookings County Planning Commission is a nine-member commission whose function is to recommend approval or disapproval of land use plans, zoning ordinances, subdivision plots, and amendments thereof to the Brookings County Commission. Commission makes its recommendation based upon the adopted comprehensive plan for the physical development of the unincorporated areas of Brookings County. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. After motion is moved and seconded, it is open for debate. Those supporting the motion shall, in turn, give their reasons. Those opposing the motion shall then offer their reasons. After everyone has been given a chance to be heard, the commission shall recommend approval or disapproval based on the testimony and information presented. A simple majority of a quorum of members of the planning and zoning board in attendance is required to forward a recommendation. And with that, we move on to agenda item number seven, consideration of plots. 2019, plot 006, plot of Block 1, Jensen addition in the southwest one-fourth, the southwest one-fourth of Section 23, Township 110 North, range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, and the northwest one-fourth of the northwest one-fourth of Section 26, Township 110 Range 51 West of the 5th Prime Meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. With that, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Davis.
Second.
Second by Ford.
Yes, plat 2019, plat 006. Gary Jensen is combining a 34.17 acre parcel and a 1.87 acre parcel into one parcel containing 35.4 acres. The parcels are adjoining and consist mostly of grass, pasture land, with some tillable farm ground, and a portion of the parcel is also in the flood plain. The property adjoins the south city limits of Aga, and a residence could be built on the property as it does meet the 35 acre requirement for building requirement. It meets the plating requirements for the 2016 comprehensive plan of the unincorporated rural area land use statement on page 24. Being this adjoins the city limits of Aga, with their street sign, master street plan and their comprehensive plan, they will have to sign off on the plat also before it can be go to the registered, before it can go to the county commission for approval, so. This is here, the plat. Here, this is a easement right now coming off Casson Avenue for the building site right here. This is a larger parcel. This is a 34.8 acre parcel, and this is the 1.8 acre parcel that was there, and they're just combining them all together in one large parcel. So this small tract could be accessed now. This is the beacon map showing what the parcel will look like after it's joined together in the red outside outlined area. This is the 34.1 acre parcel as it is today without, and this is this is the 1.8 acre parcel they're going to add to that larger one, so it's not landlocked anymore, can be accessed. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Is a representative here for Mr. Jensen?
No, he is not here this evening. And I have spoke with the city manager of Aga, and at this time, they have no objections to the, to the combining of the parcels, just that will need to go through the proper channels for city council approval, and then for their signature on the plat.
So you'll have a written, something written from the city of Aga?
Right, it'll probably be an addition on the signature page of the plat for being able to be signed by the mayor or the city manager.
Mr. Chair, if you would, I'll try to summarize that a little bit better. Luke Muller, first district here. As staff's aware of this too, because they've been working with the city, but since this property touches the city limits of the city of Aga, the city of Aga has to sign off on it as well. The, the surveyor, it sounds like, was not aware of that at the time they submitted it. However, it's kind of a deal where it works in tandem with each other. It's not a case of contingent. You review whether it meets your subdivision code, they review whether it meets their subdivision code, and then if it meets each of yours, then you both sign off and you're all happy. If it only meets one, then it only meets one. Doesn't, you could make it a contingency, but it's really, makes no difference if you make a contingency or not, it doesn't work if it's not approved by Aga.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Muller. How about, we'll open it up to the public, questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience have anything for or against to say about this plat? Everybody shaking their head no, so we'll close the public portion, back to the board again. Questions, comments? Seeing none, Richard, call a roll.
McHugh.
Aye.
Ilankiewicz.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Eriksen.
Aye.
And Rochelle.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Brookings County Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is a nine-member board which has the power to hear requests for variances, conditional uses, appeals, and special exceptions. The concurring vote of two-thirds of the attending members is necessary for approval of any action by the board. A nine-member board requires six votes. A six-member board requires six votes. In accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, we require a motion to approve a request before the request can be debated. As a matter of policy, all motions are made in the positive. The board, under specific powers granted by the state, shall authorize variances from the zoning requirements where special conditions existing on the land will result in unnecessary hardship for the applicant. Financial disadvantage to the property owners shall not constitute proof of unnecessary Agenda item number eight, 2019, conditional use 004. Mike Cotton and George Cotton have made an application, 2019, conditional use 004, to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for conditional use. Article 11, Section 1101, A Agricultural District, Conditional Use Permit Number 19, Seasonal Retail Stands, excluding garden produce but including fireworks stands. The property is described as the west 317 feet of the east 357 feet, the west 800.81 feet of the south 332 feet of the southwest one-fourth, southeast one-fourth, except H1 and H2, and the north 643 feet of the south 975 feet of the east 357 feet of the west 880.81 feet, and the east 40 feet of the west 800.81 feet of the south 332 feet of the southeast one-fourth, all in Section 14, Township 110 North, range 51 West, which is in Aga Township, located at 638 East Highway 14, Aga, South Dakota 57071. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by McHugh.
Second.
Second by Ilankiewicz. Richard?
Yes, 2019, conditional use 004. Mike Cotton and George Cotton have applied for a conditional use permit for a seasonal fireworks stand. The stand will be located at Mike Cotton's, which is at 638 East Highway 14, Aga, South Dakota. They have previously sold fireworks within the city limits of Aga for the past six or seven years. They will use a portable, 10 by 12 portable building that will be anchored down to sell the fireworks out of. The hours of operation, as stated in their business plan, will be 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. There is an existing driveway off US Highway 14 that will be used for entrance and exit to the property. The applicant's site plan, the hours of operation were included in the report, which shows adequate parking area, entrance and exit, and the building locations. The applicants will have to abide by South Dakota Code of Law 34-37 for the sale of fireworks. Mike and George each own land that adjoins each other, and the stand may be located on one or both parcels. The combined area of both parcels is seven acres. Aga City Manager Jameson Barret has no objections to the conditional use request, and John Ritter House, the South Dakota Department of Transportation, has no objections to the request. Letters were sent to the adjoining landowners, the city of Aga, Aga Township Chairman and Clerk, and the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on April 23rd and 30th, 2019, and the Aga Tribune on April 25th and May 2nd, 2019. And we've heard no response from the adjoining landowners, Aga Township, or the, what was previously mentioned in the, by report, from the city of Aga and the Department of Transportation. This is their initial use permit. Site plan, driveway, fireworks stands up in this area. June 27th to July 5th, the dates are open, and 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Just, we'll ask for your discussion in just a minute here. And then just, this is the beacon map showing US Highway 14. This is the driveway right here. When I get to the pictures, you see they've got crushed concrete in there, so it's a good solid driveway. Right now, this is where the stand is proposed to be located, give or take either side of the property line there. Parking area right up in this area. This is Mike's property right here, and then this is George's back here. This is George's property, the long skinny one. Oklahoma panhandle-shaped property there. This is just looking to the east on US Highway 14. It's just looking west by the speed sign there, right by the driveway. Just looking north into the driveway, you can see the crushed concrete to drive on. This will be the proposed area. Move the trailer evidently, and then track and other stuff there when the season comes towards it. This is driving and parking area. This is the stand that they have, that they would be selling the fireworks out. There's anchors, to anchor down on the front, right up here and in the back on there, so. And Mr. Ron Hillstead is still the seat representative of the applicant, so he can answer your, any questions that you may have when you ask him to come forward.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Mr. Hillstead, please come forward and identify yourself, please. Tell us anything that Richard left out, or anything you want to add.
Okay, I'm here representing, well, Mike and I have had a fireworks stand in Aga for probably seven years, but it's been in the corner of the Valley Gas Stop in Aga there, and we'd like to get it moved away from the fuel pumps and stuff, so he's bought this piece of property, and it would work out well if we could move the stand over there. I thought I knew where the stand was going to be, but after that description of the, on the beginning, I was beginning to wonder, but it's in the right spot. With all the legal descriptions, what I went. But is there any other questions, or?
When you're at the valley, how much foot traffic did you have from children?
I'm half down too, so.
When you're at the valley, how much foot traffic from children did you have?
How much, how much distance did we have?
No, how many, how many children walked up there? Is there going to be an extra hazard with kids walking across 14?
There would have been not a lot, just, of just kids, they've been, usually with their parents were with them. We did have one person from the valley that would come out there and visit, you know, quite often, but other than that, just kids, no.
Were there questions from the board? We've done quite a few of these fireworks stands in different locations, and Mr. Hillstead, would you please stay, stay there for a little bit? There may be some more questions yet, so. Anyway, we've done quite a few of these, as long as, as long as they meet, meet the state requirements, normally there's not too much of an issue, but safety is a big issue, and Mr. Ford was, was wondering about children walking out there. And could you elaborate a little bit more on that, Mr. Ford?
Well, location of the valley, their previous location, the number of kids that have to cross a US highway to walk to it or ride your bike to it is for, foreseeably, considerably less. I understand to get to the valley, you got to go out on the road it takes to the bean plant, so there's a lot of truck traffic there too, but it's considerably slower as they're slowing down to make their turn into the plant. I was just curious how much of the traffic, you know, if you're going to have kids crossing a US highway now.
Okay.
So the stand in the picture, that's, that's kind of a small stand. Is that the same one that was used last year?
That's, did we do what last year? No, we've, we've had it for about seven years.
That particular stand?
Yep.
So then, do you store fireworks in other areas, or is it all stored in that?
We just sell them out of there. We store them in a trailer, a semi-trailer.
Okay. Oh, and then that's the picture, that other one? Yeah, that, okay.
They're moved out of the trailer, and then we put, you know, a certain amount of fireworks in that stand.
Did it say the dates that were, that this will be open from, when to when?
Yes, according to state law, it's July 27th through July, June 27th through July 5th. And if they wanted to, they could sell fireworks from December 28th to January 1st, but I don't believe that is their intentions.
Is there sufficient parking area?
Is there particular what?
Sufficient parking area?
Yeah, he has, there's quite an area back there. It'd be, basically be sod or grass, so it would be fine for parking. And he's made, or developed a fairly solid driveway going back there. I think it's all crushed concrete.
Are you going, go ahead.
And I was going to say, the stand will be off the road quite ways, they're worried about kids and stuff, you know, and so if they, trying to think if there's even a sidewalk on the other side of the street or not, but, but the main reason we want to move it is to get away from the fuel pumps and stuff on the, on the valley lot there.
What about, are, is there going to be, are you going to allow any fireworks to be lit in the area?
We are debating on that. He's got a big enough area where they could go back on a grassy area to try it, but they've, they've made the limit longer now. It used to be 150 feet where you could shoot fireworks, now it's 300 feet, so it would put them way back, and I don't know if that would be allowable. I think there would be room there. We haven't determined yet whether we're going to allow that or not. My guess would be possibly not. Depending on what, if it's dry conditions, absolutely not.
I don't know what, what the board thinks about that, but we're concerned about safety for, not only for, for you, but for also the public. I don't know, have we done anything in the past as far as limiting?
Not as far as limiting, as far as lighting them fire off, test fire fireworks, we have not in the past. But this area back here, it's, it's, it's a considerable, well, we can tell you what it is. It's 590 feet from the corner, the northeast corner of the property down to the property line right here. So they more than exceed the, the state allowable limit of 300 feet, so.
Well, if somebody wanted to shoot some off, then you should have a marker out there that where 300 feet is.
We've evidently got a terrible echo in here. I'm having a very hard problem hearing.
I'm saying that if you do allow them to shoot fireworks there, that you should have a marker at 300 feet from the building.
Then also, I'm sure trash, trash pickup, you have a dumpster out there? You'll have a dumpster there?
There is, Mike would have a dumpster on the property, but I think we would probably have a, whether it would be a pool or something, a wet spot to make sure stuff was doused good before it was thrown in the dumpster too. There would definitely be a cleanup. And if there was anything shot at all, it would be very limited.
This, this is a one-year?
Yes, this is for one year, but would expire, I put in there, it would expire January 2nd, 2020. And then, in the past, we've allowed them for one year, they come back the next year and apply again. If there's no issues, then we grant us, we've granted a three-year conditional use. Then at the end of the three years, they come back, they still are having good luck and good business, want to continue it, then we make, we've made it permanent in the past,
Open it up to the public. Does the public have any questions, comments, either for or against? They're shaking their heads no, so we'll close the public portion, go back to the board again. Any, any more questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, call the roll. We need to go through the findings.
Yep, we'll go through the findings, the facts here. I'll read the front page and then go through the standard findings, and if there's any notations, I'll read those. Conditional, Brookings County zoning conditional use permit 2019 CU 004, an application for a conditional use permit, having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission. Acting as the county board of adjustment, a copy of the application being attached here too. Such application being made by Mike and George Cotton regarding the following real property. The west 317 feet of the east 357 feet of the west 800.81 feet of the south 332 feet of the southwest one-fourth, southeast one-fourth, except H1 and H2, and the north 643 feet of the south 975 feet of the east 357 feet of the west 800.81 feet, and the east 40 feet of the west 800, 800.1 feet of the south 332 feet of the southeast one-fourth, all in Section 14, Township 110 North, range 51 West, Aga Township. After due notice, public hearing have been held on the application on the 7th day of May 2019. Number one, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finding that it is empowered to grant such conditional use under the following sections of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Article 11, Section 1101, A Agricultural District, Conditional Use Permit Number 19, Seasonal Retail Stand, excluding garden produce but including fireworks stand. Further granting that the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. Number two, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and certifies that the following specific rules governing the conditional use have been complied with. Must comply with South Dakota Code of Law 34-37 for fireworks. Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finds that the satisfactory provisions, provisions and arrangements have been made concerning the following. A, will use existing driveway on US Highway 14. B, no on-street parking allowed and use onsite parking. C, use dumpster service. E, D, none stated. E, 16 square foot allowed, sign allowed, and any regulatory and safety signs. F, display areas as shown on the site, the site plan. G, comprehensive plan requirements met for agricultural district. Number four, Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions this conditional use following additional specific, special conditions and safeguards. A, conditional use permit valid only, for only when fireworks can be legally sold, June 27th through July 5th, 2019, and December 28th through January 1st, 2019. But that part I'm going to take out, we weren't going to be selling those at that time. B, hours of operation shall be 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., with extended hours from 10 a.m. to 12 a.m. from July 2nd through July 4th. Must play state, display state fire marshal permit and days and hours of operation for South Dakota Code of Law and a copy on file with the zoning office, and comply with Code of Law 34-37 for fireworks. D, building permit required for temporary trailers if they are used, so they would have to get a building permit for their, their trailer to be, sell fireworks out of. E, conditional use permit expires January 2nd, 2020. E, conditional use permit expires January second, two thousand twenty. Brookings County Board of Adjustment by least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants the above petition or a conditional use permit for the above described real property as follows. Temporary seasonal retail stand for the sale of fireworks in the agricultural district expires January second, two thousand twenty. This conditional use permit is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the requirements and conditions in three and four above. Upon compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. If approved, the Brookings County zoning director is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the requirements of this conditional use permit. This conditional use permit is not used within one year, one year of the date granted. It shall be invalid dated the seventh day of May, two thousand nineteen.
Does that look all right to the board?
I have a question. Is there any process that the actual location of where the fireworks would be ignited? Is there any additional approval process for that location?
No.
No, and as I see on the documents here, there is no real designation of the spot where that's gonna take place, right?
No, on here there is not, but they have to be three hundred feet away for the codified law.
Three hundred feet away from?
From the stand.
From the stand?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Hillstead, do you have any questions or comments on the findings? Okay, Richard, call the roll.
McQ.
Aye.
Yelenkiewicz.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Ericson.
Aye.
And Rochelle.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, twenty nineteen, variant zero zero three, Ann Winiger has made an application, twenty nineteen, variant zero zero three, to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a variance. Article eleven, section eleven, A, eleven oh one, A, agricultural district. Area regulation number two, front yard. The minimum depth of the front yard shall be one hundred feet. A corner lot will have two front yards. Property described as the northeast one-fourth of the northeast one-fourth of section thirty-five, township one eleven north, range forty-eight west, which is in Sherman Township. Located at two zero seven one three, four hundred and eighty-third Avenue, White, South Dakota, five seven two seven six. That is our motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion by Yelenkiewicz. Second by Ford. Richard?
The variance, yep. Yeah, two zero one nine, V A R zero zero three, Ann Winiger has applied for variance to move in a used mobile or manufactured home forty-five feet from the center of four hundred and eighty-third Avenue. A variance of eighty-eight feet under her father's property. Required setback is a hundred and thirty-three feet from the center of four hundred and eighty-third Avenue. Four hundred and eighty-third Avenue is a Sherman Township gravel road that is rolling, rolling and sparsely populated with the farm, next farm being located one and a half, one and a quarter miles to the south of proposed site. Building site is small with hills and valleys close to the buildings and the southern edge of the building site is in the floodplain. Landowner Eugene Sherman, Ann's father, was granted a variance request for a mobile home in the same location on November first, nineteen ninety-four. That mobile home was moved off in two thousand sixteen and you will also be hearing a conditional use request tonight also for a manufactured home for a secondary residence for a family member also this evening. Public notices were published in the Brookings Register on April twenty-third and thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and the white Tri-City Star on April twenty-fifth and May second, two thousand nineteen. Letters were sent to the jointing landowners and the Sherman Township chairman and clerk. The variance application. Site plan, four eighty-third Avenue. The building site with the house and the proposed location of the mobile home. Here's the image. Uh, this was taken in two thousand sixteen. You can see the mobile home was, was there when this image was taken for the beacon map. The red area is the floodplain. Um, this is the rolling. You can see the valleys, rolling hills coming down to the edge of the buildings right here and, uh, right in this area is, um, drops off to a depression or valley right north of the, the house. This is looking north towards, um, from the driveway. Looking south. There. This is looking to the northwest from the driveway, the house here and the fence and after, right in here, it's a short distance and it gets to rolling into the hills on the west side of that. There's looking off to the west from the bar, into the, from the driveway and looking at the barn. Just looking towards the southwest and this area would be the floodplain back out here on that. And right here, my wheel is at forty-five feet from the center of the road, approximately where the old house location was. You know, the previous trailer house was located in that area. This is a telephone or electrical pedal still back there. There's a better picture of it. Septic telephone or electric and then also back here is another utility hookup. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Ann Winiger, are, are you here? Please come forward, identify yourself. You, sir, you could come with her if you would like, okay?
I'm Annie Winiger.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to what Richard left out?
I agree with everything he said. That is the best option.
Pull a microphone next to you. There you go.
That's the best option for a trailer home out there because of the hills and the utilities are there, so that's why I applied for the variance.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I can only say that in the twenty-two years that it was there before, it never caused us any problems. Uh, our farming operation has that forty-acre building site or whatever there, completely surrounded on all four directions. And that, uh, the road is not plowed, um, from that picture there where the stock trailer is, that's about as far south as the road is plowed in the wintertime.
So, so the township has no objection? Is that correct?
No. They only plow, the, the road is closed from there south to, to the next residence, which is a mile and a quarter south. And our, our township actually, um, does the road blading on that? And then, uh, we're reimbursed by the Sherman Township.
I, I discussed this with Daryl Nelson on the phone last night and his comment was, was, uh, just because there was a variance granted in nineteen ninety-four, he's not sure he, you know, just because it was put there in ninety-four, there's no reason to grant it again, but the question he, he has is why can't it be pushed farther away from the road, farther back?
Well, I, I can add to that, that the distance between there and the, the existing home is too narrow.
Is that correct?
Yeah, there isn't a lot of room there.
It's probably twenty feet.
Yes, I would attest to that also when I was out, took pictures. That's twenty, twenty-five feet would be at the most the distance between the two structures.
And because of the lay of the land, there really is no other place on that building site to put a trailer house.
Yeah, that was my next question, if there was any other location it could be put, so, so the answer is no then.
Otherwise, it would have to be up on two oh seven and when they redid two oh seven, they did not make driveways there that are usable, very, very unusable even for us.
Okay. Other questions from the board? We'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience have anything, any comments for or against? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Back to the board again. Other questions? Richard, caller roll.
We'll go over the findings and facts here and then we'll. It's our standard findings for Brookings County zoning variance two zero one nine, V A R zero zero three. Application for a variance have been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment. Copy of the application being attached here too. Such application being made by Ann Winiger regarding the following real property. The northeast one-fourth of the northeast one-fourth of section thirty-five, township one eleven north, range forty-eight west, Sherman Township. After due notice, a public hearing have been held on the application on the seventh of May, two thousand nineteen. Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. Number five, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions this variance upon the following special conditions or safeguards. A, shape and size of the building site. B, south of the building site, the area is located in the floodplain. C, topography of the land adjacent to the building site is rolling hills and valleys. D, the location of existing house, septic system, water, telephone and new electricity, electricity lines. Brookings County Board of Adjustment by least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants petition or variance for the above described real property as follows. Moved in a manufactured mobile home to be located forty-five feet from the center of four hundred and eighty-third, eighty-third Avenue as a secondary residence for a family member. This variance is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the conditions and safeguards in five above and upon com- compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. If approved, the Brookings County zoning director is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the terms of this variance. If this variance is not used within the three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid dated the seventh day of May, two thousand nineteen.
Can you, can we, if we go back up, can, can we add that there's no, no more, no other reasonable location to place this? Place this, this, uh, mobile home? Does that look all right? Any more comments? Any additions or corrections? Now we'll go to roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Ericson.
Aye.
Yelenkiewicz.
Aye.
McQ.
Aye.
And Rochelle.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Agenda item number ten, twenty nineteen, conditional use zero zero five. Ann Winiger has made an application, twenty nineteen, conditional use zero zero five, to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment for a conditional use. Article eleven, section eleven oh one, A, agricultural district, conditional use number sixteen. One manufactured or mobile home as a secondary residence on an established farmstead to be used for the occupancy of a farm employee or by parents, grandparents, children or brothers and sisters of the occupant of the land. Provided that said mobile home is removed within ninety days of the vacation there from by the qualified occupant or occupants. The property described as the northeast one-fourth of the northeast one-fourth of section thirty-five, township one eleven north, range forty-eight west, which is in Sherman Township. Located at two zero seven one three, four hundred and eighty-third Avenue, White, South Dakota, five seven two seven six. And with that is their motion to approve. Motion by Ford.
Second.
Second by Davis. And Richard?
Yes, two zero nine, nineteen, CU zero zero five. Ann Winiger has applied for a conditional use to move in a used mobile manufactured home as a secondary residence on her father's property. Ann's dad lives in the primary residence and they will live in the manufactured home. The used manufactured home will be located on the east side of the existing house. The exist, landowner Eugene Sherman is granted a special exception for a mobile home for his daughter in the same location on November first, nineteen ninety-four, and that mobile home was moved off in two thousand sixteen. The utilities are sterile in place from the previous mobile home and we heard a variance request earlier this evening for that. And public notices were published in the Brookings Register on April twenty-third and thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and the white Tri-City Star on April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen and May second, two thousand nineteen. And letters were sent to the jointing landowners, Sherman Township chairman and clerk. Copy of the conditional use permit request, application. Site plan again showing the placement of the home. There's the beacon, beacon map showing the area of the two homes there. The red area being the floodplain. And just pictures again showing, going, looking north from the driveway up towards, um, the Blacktop Road and looking south along four eighty-third and towards the northwest from the driveway, west from the driveway looking towards the, the barn. Southwest looking towards a, grainy and other outbuildings there. And just looking at the, the wheel where the outer edge would be at forty-five feet from the center of the road. Just the previous locations of the utilities from the previous home. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Ms. Winiger, do you have anything to add to what Richard said?
No, it's all, it's all correct.
Okay. Questions from the board? Comments, Dave, uh, Tom?
Uh, no, I don't have any other additional comments. The, uh, I do know that when they redid the road there on two oh seven, that they opened a a spring or something and a lot of, the water likes to come down to that snowbank there, right there. And then go under the, and as it builds up, it- there, and then go under the, and as it builds up, it sometimes creates an ice jam down here by the driveway or by the mailboxes, but I don't think the trailer house is gonna affect that at all.
So, so just looking at the trailer house that was existing prior to 2016, did that cause any snow or any problems?
No.
So this new residence is gonna be the same thing in your estimation, it's not gonna cause any problems for the, for the township?
I don't think so, no, because the, the hills are steep, right north of the existing house, and most of the snow drops off northwest of there most of the time before it gets down to the road.
Open it up to the public, questions, comments, for or against? Seeing no response, we'll close the public portion back to the board. Further questions? Seeing none, go through the findings.
Brookings County zoning conditional use permit, 2019, CU 005. Application for a conditional use permit having been filed with the Brookings County Zoning Commission, acting as a Brookings County Board of Adjustment. Copy of the application being attached here too. Such application being made by Ann Winiger regarding the following real property. The northeast one-fourth of the northeast one-fourth of section 35, Township 111 North, Range 48 West, Sherman Township. After due notice, a public hearing have been held on the application on the 7th day of May, 2019. Number one, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment hereby finding that it is empowered to grant such conditional use request under the following sections of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. Article 11, Agricultural District, Section 11.01, Conditional Use Number 16. Further finding that the granting of the conditional use will not adversely affect the public interest. Number two, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further finds and certifies that the following specific rules governing the conditional use request have been complied with. Manufactured or mobile home must have been constructed after June 15th, 1976. Number three, letter A, will use existing driveway located at 20713 483rd Avenue. B, none stated. C, none stated. D, none stated. E, none stated. F, none stated. G, general meets the comprehensive plan for the agricultural district. Number four, the Brookings County Board of Adjustment further determines and conditions this conditional use permit upon additional special conditions or safeguards. Move a manufactured mobile home to be removed within 90 days after the vacation of the qualified occupant or occupants. Brookings County Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment by least two-thirds vote of its full membership hereby grants petitioner a conditional use permit for the above described real property as follows. Move in a used manufactured mobile home as a secondary residence for a family member to live in. This conditional use permit is specifically conditioned upon initial and continued compliance with all the requirements and conditions in three and four above, upon compliance with all applicable provisions of the Brookings County zoning ordinance. If approved, the zoning, Brookings County Zoning Director is authorized to issue any required building permits for construction consistent with the requirements of this conditional use permit. If this conditional use permit is not used within three years of the date granted, it shall be invalid, dated the 7th day of May, 2019.
How's that look to the board? Look okay?
I would, I would like to see on the mobile home, because there's two 911 signs there at the site, I'd like to see some kind of a number or something on the mobile home so that ambulance or somebody could identify which residence they'd need to go to.
The two residences are there, the signs are there already, that's something we have not done, and it would still have that same number.
Yeah, what I'm saying is the actual mobile home have a number on it. I mean, a fire, a fire would be obvious, but for an ambulance call, they would not know.
No, that's a really good idea.
Also, I'm sure the postman will figure it out eventually, but it'd be nice for that, or the UPS, or something also.
Is the rest of the board good with that? Further questions, comments from the board? Okay, Richard, call the roll.
Kleinjohn.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Spence.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
McHugh.
Aye.
Ilankiewicz.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Rochelle.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, department reports.
You got anything, Richard?
I don't have anything, we've got a couple, a couple items coming up here for June as of yet, but we got a whole week to go before the deadline is, is there, so.
On my, my part of it is, we got a new state's attorney, Dan Nelson, we haven't invited him here yet, but he'll get here sooner or later, and so he'll, he'll take over the legal matters for the board as required. 19 of 23 townships filed paperwork that we sent into the state of South Dakota to be reviewed for damages during the blizzard and, and snowmelt. I don't anticipate all of them being approved, you know, we, we sent out a, a list of stuff that we required back, such as pictures and, and forms filled out the right way. Some townships filled them out like they needed to be, some filled them out partially, and some didn't even, like I said, only 19 turned them in, so, but as soon as we get that report back, we'll be more than happy to brief this board, as soon as we know who, who got it, and we'll be in contact with all the townships. And then, last but not least, the houses are required to be marked by 911, matter of fact, if you got two houses on a lot, you're required to have like three-inch letters identifying which house it is. And that's all I got.
I did think of one thing, Mr. Chairman. Hammock Dairy is also building a structure, a house on there for some employees of their operation. It will be a four-bedroom house with a crawl space and no basement, so they are building that on the same property that the dairy is on up there in their south unit, so.
Does that need to come to the board?
No.
I don't know how that...
And they're following under the definition of the rules of a family, so...
Okay.
It's two but not more than, no, three but not more than three members not related by blood, marriage, or adoption, so...
Oh, sure.
They're aware of the, the family definition of that, and there's, like I said, there's no basement underneath it, so it's just a crawl space, so. They had, the way the winter was, they had some labor issues getting their employees back and forth to work with the weather and whatnot, so.
We needed to visit a little bit about Daryl Nelson. At the previous meeting, his, his wife called in and, and indicated with some health issues that Daryl probably needed to resign from this board. Without going into any detail, he, he has since been feeling better. His medical issue, our, things are progressing, and he's, he's, he's looking to get on his way back to normal again. I'm gonna ask Mr. Hill to just comment on, on the resignation that was called in, and we didn't do anything with it, so I think it's gonna stay as, he's gonna stay on the board, or, Mr. Hill, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we actually did advertise the job, just from the phone call that we got initially, but after talking to the commission assistant, Stacy Stephenson, it was decided to go ahead and, you know, we've never kicked anybody off the board for medical issues, and as long as he, he feels he can do a good job, and once he comes back on the board and fully functional, we've got no problem. So, we withdrew the advertisement of looking for a new board member, and, and he'll be, he'll remain a board member. And that's what we got the alternates for, in case, in case he has to miss a meeting due to a medical appointment or something, we've got alternates to, to fill in for it,
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I don't think we need an executive session for any things, we'll move, move past that. Does anyone on the board have anything else we need to talk about? If not, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ford. Second. Second by McHugh. Meeting adjourned.